All right, could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, carries, could I get a motion to approve the minutes of eleven seven?
Motion to approve the eleven seven minutes?
Second.
All right, any discussion, admission? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Matt, you wanted to read a conflict of interest.
Yes, so my wife is a teacher in Royal Elementary, and today on the agenda, we have items in school improvement plans that will have an impact on day-to-day operations of the school and also will likely affect the work environment and the day-to-day responsibilities that may affect the day-to-day responsibilities of my wife's position. This constitutes an appearance of conflict according to Massachusetts law, and that requires that I disclose the potential conflict, ensure the committee and public that I can participate in this discussion, otherwise the public will be doing this fairly.
Great. Sure person comments, oh, that's me. So I'm going to take a minute, and I guess we've been getting some questions about the, what's the code, the department?
District review or D-Car for short.
You know, if you're hip, you call it the D-Car, I guess. The questions, you know, there've been a number of questions, like, why were we selected? And did we do something to trigger this? And the answer to that is no, all schools kind of are thrown into the bucket to be considered and potentially reviewed. We're on three, five, and six-year review cycles for various different areas of the overall school system anyways, and actually, this year, I believe, we were not having any reviews, so we kind of ended up moving to the top of the list to get a full review. So, did we ask to be reviewed, and why would we ask to go through this? We didn't ask to be reviewed, the DESE just does this anyways, and, but coming out of it, you get, you know, a lot of insight and perspective into best practices, in terms of where you stand in terms of things that are helpful or hurtful, in terms of delivering great, great education in our system. Are we being evaluated? Will they give us action steps we have to complete? No, we're not being evaluated. This is a review, it's basically based against best practices and their desire on how things are moving forward, and like I said, it kind of gives us some scores in various different areas that allows us to then take those scores, digest them, determine what actions and steps we want to take as a school system or self. When will we receive a report? The report will probably get to us in normal statewide time, three to five months, so after they're finished with their review, which is happening. If there are other questions or other thoughts that are out there, feel free to reach out to myself, Dr. Cohen, we're happy to answer those questions that might be there. So, with that, we will move to community comments. There's any community comments, or should we go to this first? Nope, maybe you go.
I do see one hand raised.
Sure.
So Gina, you are all set to talk whenever you finish.
Oh, yeah. Hi there, thank you for taking my community comment. I just wanted to say, I watched the last school committee meeting today, I thought it was a very nice meeting and very informative, I just wanted to give you guys props for that. And then, now that I was watching it, I'm just wondering, is there like a location that you guys are storing these presentations? We don't get to see it as it's happening, and I would have loved that, with the whole Rocket thing, you know, in which Cheryl was talking about, the SAMPAS score. And, yeah, so that's pretty, that's pretty much my only question right now. Thank you.
Okay. I think, you know, where it gets stored is every meeting is recorded these days, and so, and then it gets uploaded into YouTube channel. So like I said, as long as we're getting some subscribers, you can go there, you can subscribe to our YouTube channel.
Can you still hear me? I mean, the PowerPoint presentation.
Yeah, I think I can, I can add to this. We do try to have it be presented through Zoom, but I think every once in a while, it doesn't get presented through Zoom. So if that happens sometime, and you were looking to, definitely always reach out to me, and I can get that to you, but we can throw that into the meeting, onto the website where the school committee agenda goes to, I can go and find the ones from the last meeting and put it in there for you.
Oh, awesome, thank you so much.
Great. All right, well, that will move on to student comments, and the first set of student comments? More in elementary.
All right, we'd like to introduce our students for you. These are fourth graders, Tia and Ta and Scarlett O'Connor, second grader, Clayton O'Connor, kindergarten, Krista Leah Pike, and third grader, Mike Uwe. These students are joining us tonight to share about our kindness fundraiser that we completed just this past week. The fundraiser is a unique way for students to raise money by completing acts of kindness and getting pledges to do that. The fundraiser coincided with World Kindness Day, which was November 13, and aligns well with our core values, respect, inclusivity, and positivity.
Hi, our kindness fundraiser ended last week, and the Stent Memorial has completed more than 251 acts of kindness and raised more than $10,877 for a school. The third grade class worked away with 70 completed acts of kindness, and kindergarten came in a close second with 58 completed acts of kindness.
Hi, I'm Scarlett. My neighbor and I walked up and down the neighborhood and brought in everyone's trash cans. Me and my brother also sent extra Halloween candy to the military.
My friend Victor and I went to his friend's house and raised these. I sent this card to my friend. I wrote it to him. It made my heart so.
My dad, my brother, my brother Matt and I delivered food to homeless people. We went to a church and delivered the food. We were the only ones who did it that day. It made me feel good to help people. I also paid the kindness drop and put them at the school. I hope they make people happy.
I wrote a kinder in chalk on the driveway and drew my bookshelf. I also flipped the toilet seats for the United Powers.
So we're very proud of the many different ways that our students demonstrate kindness every day, but we're also excited about the ways that they made a positive impact, not only in our school, but on the larger community, through this innovative fundraising experience. I want to thank our PTO, and in particular, Ashley O'Connor, who's sitting over in the back over there, for discovering and coordinating this event, and we're looking forward to our whole school pajama day celebration on Wednesday. Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you, thank you. Don't forget to subscribe.
Any questions for the kids?
Do you come to all our meetings?
Is that a bike ride?
Is it?
Yeah, the creeper.
So it's a great job, you guys did an amazing thing. There's a lot of people that were very probably happy and benefited from it, that's a great thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
That's the second reminder, don't forget to subscribe, hit the like button, and, and comment.
That's right, late for that. All right, next time I get to do this for Instagram.
Yeah, you don't really need to subscribe.
All right, our student representatives unfortunately are otherwise occupied tonight with their studies and their valuable educational opportunities, all that. So, Dr. Cohen, turn it over to you.
So you get me.
That's right.
Which I love to follow the awesome students, but I am going to be sharing a few things probably our students would be sharing tonight too, so thanks for the opportunity. So first thing, I just want to give an update, a COVID update. Hate to kind of even mention COVID updates, we used to have to do that all the time, but basically, wanted to let the community know and went out in my district newsletter and all of our newsletters to the community as well, but we had an opportunity to receive at-home COVID-19 test kits for the whole school community, so they're to be used by student staff, and it's going to be going out tomorrow either through homerooms or to students, and they have coordinated efforts at all of the buildings, so I just, it's optional, you know, have to use them, but just wanted to give everybody a heads up that we were able to acquire that from the state, they said it was available, we said, yeah, I'm sure, you know, some people may have some expired tests, we have lots of people traveling, and so similarly, last year, probably over the holiday break, we had something similar where we gave test kits out and started a regular routine. Here, we're just sending it out, and if they want to use that, it's recommended to do that before they come back from break, so just want to give a heads up on that. I wanted to give, we were at the end of our sports season just recently, it has been concluding, we also have lots of student activities that have been taking place, so I wanted to take a moment to give some highlights from NIPMUC, from Misco, from athletics, so if you can bear with me, I want to share kind of the outline of all the extracurricular activities that have been going on in our schools as well. First, at NIPMUC, the Mind Matters group received a donation of 500 yellow tulips to support their participation in the Yellow Tulip Project, and that was led by sophomore Suzie Barrows. NIPMUC has linked with the Yellow Tulip Project, and it's a youth-driven movement dedicated to smashing the stigma associated with mental illness, and to build community to remind people that there is help and hope for those living with mental illness. The group has planted 500 tulips around the community, including NIPMUC and other schools in the district, and also at Misco, we have some students that were involved in that as well. Eight of our students have been awarded a STEM Week Paid Internship of 100 hours each to take place in the spring of 2023, and they received this opportunity through their participation in the Mass STEM Week Challenge. I know we've referenced the STEM Week Challenge a few times, and I'm really thankful for Dave Quinn and our teachers who are involved in a lot, and taking advantage of a lot of opportunities that took place that week. Senior Riley Webster raised more than $1,000 through her participation in the Shot for Life program, which supports cancer research. In earning the funds, she took part in a 24-hour basketball tournament. Some highlights at Misco, the Misco Hill Youth Theater performed Ian of Green Gables this past weekend, and over 440, not 440, students participated in the play as actors, stage crew, lighting, and sound. The StuCo hosted their second annual Halloween on Friday, October 28. It's a Halloween-themed volleyball tournament, it's getting to be a bit competitive in the last year or so, they had 16 teams, including a staff team this year, who battled it out on the court. We had about 207th and eighth grade students who attended. Misco Hill has just joined the first Lego League. We have two teams of students being coached by NIPMUC high school students for that league, and they have a regional competition later in the year, so hopefully, we can come back and hear more about how they do with that this year. Kim Lopes has continued our chapter of Girls Who Code, and their first meeting was this past week, and we have that taking place at the middle school and the high school. They, we wanted to make sure everyone knew, session two of after-school enrichment offerings are beginning after Thanksgiving at Misco, for those of you who might have students at Misco, and NIPMUC and Misco Hill Counseling Departments are partnered through Yellow Tulip Project, so I talked about that. And finally, Misco students recently participated in a focus group with members of the Taft Public Library to share and discuss feedback around future plans for our community library. We also have the conclusion of our athletic season, so Misco Athletics wrapped up a successful fall season, we just want to congratulate all of the student athletes that participated in field hockey, soccer, volleyball, and cross country. For NIPMUC, we had two league champions for DVC, girls soccer and girls volleyball. Both teams won the Central Mass Championship as well, and girls soccer lost in round of 16, and girls volleyball lost in the round of eight, and girls volleyball finished 21 and two, which is the most successful season in school history. Girls Cross Country qualified for the state championships for the second time in school history, and last year was the first time, and they competed, I believe, this past weekend, and, and did quite well. The Fall Cheer won the Division Two Central and West Championships and competed in the state championship this past Sunday at 6:30. I saw some images coming through, I was watching some of the highlights, I, I should have put exact, I think they came in fifth in their category. So those are the main highlights, and of course, we have our annual Thanksgiving football game coming up with BBT at home at 10:00 a.m. this week. So those are just some quick highlights, I don't know if you have any questions, but we're trying to make sure we're able to share out and highlight all the great things that are taking place across all of our schools throughout the year.
That's great.
So if I could introduce Jen DeAngelo to come on up, we're going to do an update.
Did you mention the football game?
I did, I did, yep. Got it. There's also the Mendon Turkey Tribe, don't forget that too. So, thank you for having me tonight, I, I appreciate it, I want to start off, our CPAC is here, our Special Education Parent Advisory Council, so I'm going to let them come up to the table and introduce themselves, and talk to you a little bit about what their focus is, and what they're doing in our community as well. This isn't intimidating. I didn't feel comfortable. Yeah, well, thank you for having us, we are your CPAC board, my name is Jessica Moretti, and I'm one of the co-chairs.
I'm Lauren Van Norman, I'm a co-secretary.
I'm Alison Freeman, co-chair.
So, here we are. So, this, you know, last, I think over COVID, the CPAC kind of maybe dwindled a little bit, right? Last year, we really kind of brought it back together, and we've really been working hard last year and this year to really, you know, bring the community together and bring parents together to kind of, you know, redefine what the CPAC is, and if you've not really read the full description of what a CPAC is, you know, we have, we have a couple different things that are sort of upon us by Desi and the Department of Education, and so, one of those things is to collaborate with the district on programming and different things that are offered, the other is to really be there to support families and parents in their children in the special education process. So, we have monthly meetings, are we the third Monday of the month at this point?
We alternate with school.
Yeah, we try to not have this night, because we do use this room, so, so yeah, about the third Monday of every month, we meet, all of our dates are posted on our page, which is linked off of the special, the Student Support Services page, CPAC option under there. We also have found that Facebook and Instagram has been actually a really great way for us to share information, everyone knows that area, so, you know, we don't really have a ton of folks following us, but I think we're, we're getting the word out, because prior to probably last year or the year before, I don't think the presence was as big online, and so we're really trying to pump that up, I think, you know, with, we have a lot of families in the district who have students who are supported by the Special Education Department, but really reaching out to those families and making sure that they know that we're here, that we're all working together, that we're trying to, you know, create a community that they can feel supported within, has been difficult, you know, people get a lot of emails, they get a lot of information thrown at them, so really trying to find the right way to interact with people and, you know, get that feedback from folks, it's been a challenge, but one that we've taken on with gusto. I think our email list this year went up quite a bit, we, so we've seen some increase in participation, we try to do every meeting both on Zoom and in person, now that things are open back up again, just so that we can be sure that everyone's, the variety of options to, to participate is there for folks. Last year, we were able to have at least three to four speakers come to our meetings, which was really important. They were, they, the topics were occupational therapy, we did one for a gentleman, Stephen Lilly Webber, who came from the BSTA. We had another community member who is a social worker come up and do a ton of links and guidance on different support for families, so we're really trying to make sure that at each of our monthly meetings, we have something for families for a learning opportunity to help them support their child, so we try to run the gamut of all different things that are available. Definitely difficult, because as you know, we don't, we don't have a treasure, you can hear the word treasure on this board, so, you know, we're, we're beg borrowing and stealing from people to come and be a part of our, our offering for families, and we did quite well last year, I think this year has been a little bit more difficult, but we do have a really nice session coming up ne- next month, December 12 through 14.
Yeah. Whatever that, our, our annual training, so as part, every CPAC and every district has to host Federation of Children with Special Needs Training Session, it's everything from, there's four topics that Federation typically covers, one is like understanding the IP, another is basic rights, so like understanding procedural safeguards, document that all families with kids with IEPs get, and then, third one is, and the fourth one is, oh, bullying, bullying, and then the fourth one is transition planning, so in, as a district, we haven't done a transition planning session since I've been involved, so at least in the past six years, so we're doing that in December, so for kids, for older, for parents of kids that are older, and who are approaching the transition years, that'll be a good one to, to.
Yep, and we've also been partnering with area CPACs to try to maximize our footprint in education opportunities, so we've become friendly with the Hopkinton CPAC, Jen had offered contact info for the Rafton CPAC. Uxbridge. Uxbridge, so we've really tried to network, and, because there are, you know, other districts have, you know, different education opportunities, and really for us, it's all about making sure we can provide to families to help them support their kids in their learning journey. So, what am I forgetting? I just wanted to add that our meetings are open to everyone, it's parents whose children receive services or accommodations, but it's also open to any community members, and a lot of our sessions would be helpful for any parents, and we try to highlight those that might be helpful for everybody, but certainly, everyone is welcome to come, and also, if you know anyone who you think might want to present and have some good information and is free, then we will take them.
And staff, we've had actually some staff come to meetings over the years, like when we had OTs, we have one of the OTs from the district come, and, you know, they're always welcome.
We were, we were going to have a session with Jen and the team chairs just last, last week, but it conflicted with the night that the parent.
Survey thing.
Survey thing, I can't remember the name of it, but I think you all know what I'm talking about, that last Monday.
Yeah.
So we were going to reschedule that meeting, but that will be a great meeting for people to come to, I think parents will really enjoy the opportunity to chat with Jen and all the team chairs from each building, so that's an excellent one that's on the agenda, and then the one for the Federation, and other than that, we're still looking for some additional topics for the speakers for the rest of our sessions for the year. Any questions? Do you have questions for us?
I can't remember having CPAC organization present for the school board before. School, thank you very much.
That was our goals for the year, so check. Yes, yeah, so, you know, just thank you for saying, because it reminded me that we do come up, we have a mission statement, we have goals for the year, we have all, you know, we've really sat down and put a lot of thought into what our approach is going to be to support children in the community, so we'd love an opportunity to come back at the end of the year and recap how things have gone, and, you know, what we've seen trends or anything of that nature, we're, we're here to help, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Fun stuff is over. So, so I have a little bit of an update, so we're going to start with an overview of our parent surveys, so in the spring, sorry, Sam, do you need a second? So in the spring, we sent out a link for a parent survey, so this is the first time since I was here that we had done that, and solicited some information from our families. We did a twofold, we did one around the IEP process, and then we did a second set of questions around our engagement opportunities that we had last year, so for those of you who don't remember, or weren't a part, we had a whole calendar of events for families, some of them were just casual chats to commit and have conversations and hear what was going on, others were more structured workshops that we brought in some specialty to kind of guide our families. So we did a little bit of a twofold with the, with the survey, to make sure we were gearing the questions towards where we wanted them geared. So the results were pretty good, we had 55 respondents, which was great, that was about 15 to 18%, because some of our respondents didn't answer all of the questions, and we have a nice cross-section, so across the 55 respondents, it was a nice balance between elementary, middle, high school, and our other district families, and then our pre-K families, so it was a nice representation of, of the full district, which is nice, typically we get, you know, one area that's a little bit more responsive to the survey than most, so we had a nice kind of cross-section of everyone on that. We identified a couple of strengths in the trends of the information, overall, most of our questions around the IEP process were solid, so it was, it was a scale of one to five, five being, you know, exceeding, anything three and over, I considered a positive response, and most of our rates were in the 90%, so that was nice to see, and then at the end, there was a comment section where people could provide some, some qualitative feedback about how we had done, and where there might be some areas for growth. So I just pulled out a couple, so our strengths at the teams were reviewing the essential pieces of the IEP, so everyone felt that we went through and talked about strengths and weaknesses, and services, and accommodations, so everyone felt that that was, you know, we were in that, I think that was a 98% one, so that was a real strength for us, that, that we took our time to go through those meetings, and really cover all aspects of the IEP. The process was collaborative, and the information was understandable, so in the special ed world, we tend to use acronyms and jargon a little bit too much, so that was something we were really focused on last year, is making it accessible to all members of our team, so that was, that was kind of that piece of that, and then the follow-up by staff in a timely manner to answer questions, so if there was a need for follow-up, whether it was questions or additional resources that the team had engaged in conversations, we had a high response rate for that in a timely way, so that was nice to see. A couple of our areas of growth that we saw was the IEP process and the terms and sections outlined in the IEP, so there was a couple of families that felt that the document itself was overwhelming and didn't understand different aspects of the IEP, so what we're, and I'll talk about this a little later on, the areas of growth, we have put things in place to kind of correct those this year and kind of grow in those areas, and I'll talk a little bit about those later on. And then the second was community resources provided to families, so that was an initiative that we started about mid-year, I would say probably November, December, where we were engaging families in our community resources, whether it was behavioral health, whether it was behavior supports, mental health supports, and what we did is we, we would engage in those conversations as an ad need basis, so the, the response rate for that was about 60% of our families felt that we had engaged in that process during the IEP meeting to provide those community resources. I think that percentage was really relative to the fact that it wasn't a common practice, it was something that we were doing in a situational base. This year, we were doing it across all of our families, because even though those conversations may not happen in the IEP meeting, there may be struggles outside of the school setting that we're not aware of, so that was just to be a little bit more proactive in being able to provide resources for all of our families, and not just ones that brought those topics to our, to our conversation. So that was, that was the survey summary. I have to, so pre-K, this is my pre-K update, so pre-K, there's some pictures for the, from the course the last couple months, so you'll see some of our activities, this is the first year that we're fully implementing the new curriculum that we were able to purchase, last year was kind of our first year, but this is our first year of full implementation, so you'll see a lot of those hands-on experiences, there's a couple of little science projects happening, or we're weighing out and doing some comparative work, so this is just a quick summary. The two updates, I first wanted to thank the committee for the approval to expand our three-year-old program, so that was essential, at this point, we are still kind of updating as far as staffing, so we're looking to secure staffing for that program, and then we'll launch the lottery for our peers, so that's where that process stands, and then the other update from pre-K is, you know, looking in the future, right? So what do we do, what are we doing really well, and what do we kind of need to look at and figure out moving forward? So those are our ongoing conversations that are happening right now, we've had a huge, not huge, but a pretty significant increase in our level of needs coming in through the pre-K, so how do we better prepare? So how do we better prepare for those needs? And how do we utilize the resources across the district to make those opportunities more consistent in both buildings? So right now, we have a pre-K classroom both at Clough and Memorial. And how do we utilize the resources in both of our buildings to really meet the needs of all of our students? So that's kind of some of the work we're doing around pre-K. Special education update. So we had some new opportunities that we talked about last year as far as courses. We put some new electives in place at our middle school and high school around skill-based deficits. So executive functioning, transitions, literacy. Those classes are all off and running. I will say that the executive functioning class has been great and the elementary level has reached out in the last couple of weeks to talk about piloting a program at the elementary level as well. So we're gonna be looking at using some of those same resources that we're using at the middle school and then a couple of other programs that we've been fortunate to have in piloting a program at the elementary level for some of those executive functioning skills. Two of our other exciting opportunities is we're launching Best Buddies this year at the middle school. So that's really exciting. It's some work that I've started last year. And then I've had two staff members at the middle school who've kind of taken the lead on it, which has been great. So they are in the process. They've signed up their buddies. They've signed up their students. They have a couple of activities going. Last count, I think we were at 35, which was great. So they've been working hard to put those in place. And then our hope is that we expand that to the high school. And then Unified Sports. We currently have Unified Sports at the high school, but not at the middle school. So we're looking at launching middle school United, Unified Sports as well to create those opportunities for our middle school students. So those are just a couple of things that we've been working on behind the scenes that you probably haven't heard a lot about. There's a lot of legwork that goes into kind of organizing that and our commitment with the Best Buddies and the Unified Sports, Special Olympics. So there are some regulatory bodies that help us out, and it takes us through that process. They will be out actually, I think in the next couple of months, they're gonna come out and do a presentation too. So the couple of advisors at the middle school who are launching Best Buddies are gonna come out. They'll give you an update. They'll talk about all those processes and some of the activities that we've been doing. So there was a great article in the paper about our community partner, Grafton, doing some work in the community with their 18 to 22. And actually, Alicia Vesoli had sent over the article. So I wanted to highlight some of our work around that because Alicia sent it over. It was a great article. And then I thought, wow, we're not sharing our great opportunities. So I wanted to take this time to kind of talk a little bit about our partners. So we have some vocational community partners that our high school students utilize for their internships and vocational trainings when they're not in the building. And those are the United Parish of Upton Food Paintery, the Shining Rock Golf Club, the Shaws, and the Blessing Bar. So our students are utilizing some of their skills that they've learned in the classroom, in the high school, in the structured setting, out and generalizing those skills in our community. And these are four of our partners right now. We're always looking for new partners. We do, do a lot of interest inventory. So we, we talk to our students, see where they have an interest, and then we try to create a partner to meet that interest. So that is an ever-evolving list, but those are our, those are our four current partners that we're working to create those opportunities for. And then the last one is our professional development focus this year has been on learning standards. So a lot of the times in special education, we look at skill deficits as a separate entity. This year, we've been doing a lot around curriculum frameworks and looking at our ELA and our math and our history and our health, actually, curriculum frameworks for the state and, and looking at how we embed our work as special education teachers, related service providers in the work of our classroom partners through those learning standards. So that's been a little bit of our, our work around kind of bridging that gap and creating more of a whole-child approach. So I'll stop there. Can you just go back, Sam? Sorry, I know, it's so exciting. Any questions on any of this?
So we had, we had 55 respondents?
Yeah.
So we, we sent that out broadly and that's, that's all that responded?
Well, that's actually really good.
Is that really good?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. So typically, and, and again, that's about 15 to 18%. All of the respondents didn't answer all the questions. That's why there's a, there's a percentage that varies. But that was, I thought it was a great response. I don't know.
I just don't know anything to compare it against.
Yeah. So just to give you an idea, and I talked a little bit about this last year, when I did a lot of the engagement opportunities, I had like 10 families. And it was some of the same families. So to have 55 people engage and provide feedback, I was happy with that. Yeah.
And I think if you think back pre-COVID, you know, between the CPAC, the work, the reach out, the other stuff is there. I think the CPAC was starting to take off again, right? Before COVID, COVID turned down, but I think that started to come back straight. And then the work you've done as well here, it's been huge in terms of kind of getting us back on track and to the right areas. There's a lot of work that's been done.
Okay. Any other questions about these programs? Okay, great. Thanks, Sam. So we have a couple of new additions. So we've been fortunate, I know I talked about Doug Flutie Foundation last year. They've been great partners with us, and we've had the opportunity to write some grants and, and be granted those fundings for different outlevelments of our programming, reading supply materials, some, some other updates to some of our curriculum materials for our students receiving support and services through our STAR program. And then last year, we were the recipients of the Communication Board. It was finally installed this fall. It's great. It's up. So there's a couple of pictures of the Communication Board. If you haven't seen it at Memorial, I encourage you to swing by and take a look at it. And then recently, it was brought to our attention that our students at the high school are utilizing the treadmill. The treadmill wasn't sounding great. The, the bearings were not sounding wonderful at all. So we were looking for a replacement for that. So we were fortunate to be able to, you know, look at some other opportunities and replace the treadmill downstairs in this building. So that's just a picture of our, of our new addition in the last couple of weeks. Yeah. So so our parent educators and our ABA techs, we've done a heightened focus on developing our staff last year and this year. So we're looking at opportunities, and I think I talked a little bit about this last year, of really developing our, our internal resources. So that along the lines of training, cross-training, across programs, across platforms. So this year, our parent educators and our ABA techs have done some professional development around discreet trial training and data collection, and then our safety care training. Safety care is new to us this year. So that is, every district has a restraint practice that we utilize. Prior to that, we had used another model, but at the end of last year, we moved to safety care training. So we sent out 10 of our staff members to go through the three-day Train the Trainer model. They went out, they were trained, and then they came back into our district and they provide the training for the rest of our staff. So that is in process. We did about half of the staff last, special program staff last first PD day, and then the second PD is coming up. They'll be engaging in that. The certification, the recertification is 40 hours. So it's a lengthy process for our staff to engage in that. A big piece of safety here and a big piece of why we moved to it is the heightened focus on de-escalation. So that was something that was really important to us in our practices here. So we had used, again, a different program that didn't have that same level of commitment to de-escalation. So for us, that was really important. So this is our new, new one that we're rolling out this year, and we've, we've been happy with it. And then registered behavior technician training. We talked a little bit about this last year. It was a recommendation that came out of one of our program reviews. This is a more formalized process to ensure that all of our techs are receiving the same training, the same credentials and the same expectations. So it is a nationally recognized program. It's 40 hours of qualified training that has to happen. And then it does have to be overseen by our behavior special, behavior award-certified behavior analysts or our BCBA's. So we currently have two on staff now. We had brought one in two years ago. We brought a second one in in September. So that has created a nice opportunity for us to provide this training and have the oversight that our staff would need to meet both elements of that training requirement for that certification. So that is something that we have not rolled out yet, but we're looking at that to make sure that we have that consistency that we talked about with IEPs and the services and staff so that we know that our qualifications and our, and our support staff are consistent. So that you'll be hearing a little bit more about as we come through. And then the cross-training staff, that was something else that we talked about last year. So we've been doing a really nice job. The building principals have been leading the, the charge in really providing some general training so that our staff can support students in a variety of environments. So instead of just being in a program or just being in the inclusion, having that ability to support our students wherever they are, meet them where they are. So that's been a big part of our work too over the last couple of months. Any questions on the training and the PD?
What's the turnover rate of paraprofessionals and maybe?
Oh, that's a great question. So
Because that's, it's a lot of training, which is obviously good and necessary. But is it, is this something that we're constantly redoing? Because we're hiring people to positions every couple of years? Or is this something that kind of sticks around?
Yeah. So, so recently, it's been an area that's very volatile as far as support staff, whether it's paraprofessionals, ABA techs. So that has been something that we've been looking at. We haven't engaged in the RBT certification process yet. So most of our techs who are in the building and our paraprofessionals have engaged in in-district PD throughout the course of, you know, the last couple of years and then prior. But that is definitely something, and that's why we're looking at that retention piece too. So how can we train? So I will also tell you that paraeducators, I had five or six interested in doing the intense behavior training. So we did that work internally this year. They worked with the BCBA and they did some training, and they became ABA techs for us November-ish after they completed the training. So we're looking at ways to add value and to train our staff members and put them in positions for them to have some growth, some career growth in district so that they don't have to look elsewhere. Yeah. Question? No. Counseling staff update. So this year, so our counselors are unique because they report to the building principals. So in the past, my oversight of counselors has been minimal, just as more of a supportive role. So this year, through conversations with Dr. Cohen, we decided that we really wanted to put a heightened focus on our counseling staff and get them together more regularly and figure out what we're doing and what we need to be doing and how we can kind of move things forward. So we've been doing counselor collaboration opportunities. So we've had one so far this year. All of our counselors across the district are getting together with me, and we've had these opportunities to talk about what they're doing in their own buildings, where they need to move and what some of those challenging areas are. As you are all well aware, this is a really heightened area for us, even more so now. I would say in the last six years, I've seen an increase in needs around behavioral health. But I would say this year is probably the highest that I have seen it. So this is a lot of the work that we're gonna be focusing on this year outside of the special ed realm and, and more of a proactive behavioral health realm. So the counselor collaboration opportunities are gonna happen throughout the year. It's a great way for all of our building staff, especially at the elementary level, when they're, they're a party of one, to come together and have some collegial time with their colleagues. So that's been really nice. We have probably about four new counseling members across the district, a couple at the middle school, a couple at the high school. So this has been a nice opportunity for them to also collaborate across the district as new staff members. The focus of our first meeting was to talk about the four components of counseling and what that looks like in your schools. And then we moved into what do we currently do and what are our needs? So proactive approach to behavioral health is really where our focus was. We talked a lot about always being reactionary and always waiting till we were in a crisis mode to respond. So collectively, we talked about what shifts we are gonna try to make over the course of the next couple of months to really kind of flip that and be proactive, looking at things ahead of time, putting programming in place, putting supports in place, having information available to everyone to, to be much more proactive so that we're not in a place where always reactionary to, to these situations. So that's kind of been our focus that we've determined at the first meeting that we're gonna move forward with. The takeaway from that first meeting was DMH. So Department of Mental Health is our community partner, our state agency that works with us and our families. There was varied understanding of, of DMH's role and their ability to support us and what that work looked like. So we were fortunate to have our regional DMH coordinator team come in on our last PD day and talk to the counseling staff and talk about what they do, how they can help support us. They gave us a ton of resources for great initiatives and how we can incorporate those initiatives. They are happy to be partners with us. So you're gonna see an increase in those activities in the next couple of months as we start to streamline and put some district-wide approaches in place around this. So they were a great resource. And then our other one is P-PAL, which is the Parent Professional Advocacy League. They are more parent-focused. So they do workshops all the time. It's more of a resource for our families. They do online, they do in-person. So they're gonna be our collaborative partner when we're trying to create these opportunities for families to engage, whether it's in person, remotely, or just to access resources that they may need. And then the last piece of our work is around VIP versus 504 versus health plan. So to create some consistency, again, across of our buildings, we're exploring what those three plans look like, where they are implemented and who's responsible for them and how we keep that consistent. So right now, we started with the conversation with the counselors in our counselor collaboration, and we're moving on to our nursing staff. So we'll be working with them during the next PD day to talk about what the difference is between the documents. So there's a common understanding from all of our providers and then what it looks like when we develop those plans and those support plans.
So I wasn't aware of the health plans. Is that just the health aspects of each individual that has certain problems?
Correct. So if there's any kind of medical needs that happen that needs to be overseen by a nurse, that would be in a health plan.
Cool.
Yeah. And it's not a one or the other. Sometimes it's more than one of the documents that supports our students, and it's really just based on the needs of that individual student. Any questions about that?
When you're talking about the IEP versus the 504 versus the health plan, are you talking about the counseling staff's role as related service providers or just in increasing their knowledge about the different documents?
Both. Yeah. So we're talking about the role of each, the purpose of each document. We, we established a rubric just as a comparative kind of document that has five or six guiding questions, and then each, each document across the top. So this is the question, and then this is what it looks like for each of those documents. I think the consistency piece, it's just, it looks different. So if you go to the middle school, all of our students may have 504s and not health plans, right? And then if you get to the high school, it's, it's, it looks a little different. So we're just looking, again, similar to what we did with special education So we're just looking, again, similar to what we did with special education, so that when families are here, and this was a big thing that we heard from the committee, and they transition from the middle school to the high school or elementary to middle, it's a consistent process. So they're not relearning this whole process that they have to engage in. So it's very consistent so that they understand and we're all on the same page about when would you need a 504 versus a health plan versus an I E P and a health plan and kind of those scenarios. So it's really about just having that common philosophy across the district, across service providers, and across our buildings. Yeah. Thanks, Sam. So the I E P improvement plan project is a state initiative. So the state started this process in 2014. So it's been an ongoing process. It started in 2014 with focus groups. They did a round of surveys and all kinds of things, and then it kind of faded away due to budgetary cuts at the Department of Ed, due to COVID, so it was a delayed process. It got a little boost in 2019, and then in 2020 is when it really took off. So what this initiative was is to improve our outcomes for all students with disabilities. It focused on these three points of improving the I E P development, improving the form itself, which is a big piece of the work, and then creating a unified and user-friendly online system and tool. So right now, we are in the process of early adopters was was launched in the fall of 2020. So there were 19 districts that were selected. You were able to apply to be an early adopter, which means you would have engaged as a district in that process of reviewing and focus groups with stakeholders. We did apply, but we weren't selected. So the 19 is across of high schools, elementary collaborative. It's a really broad range, some vocational schools to kind of get an understanding, some private day programs of how it would implement in different places. So that's happening right now. On top of that, there's stakeholder engagement sessions that are happening. So if you go out to the D E S I website, they'll put parent ones out, they'll put, I participated in one a couple of weeks ago, that was special education directors across the state. So we had an opportunity to meet with D E S I leadership to talk about what it looked like, what the form looked like, and any concerns that we had as far as implementation. So those are continuing and ongoing. The other piece that came out of this was the new Massachusetts Referral Evaluation Eligibility Determination Card. That is now on the website. I believe I talked about it last year, and there's a link on our website to it. It's an interactive guide that takes families in the community through the eligibility piece of what a referral looks like, what special education is, and all that piece with all the forms. So that's a nice user-friendly module that they put out there at the end of last year. And then the last piece is there's an anticipated voluntary launch in September of 2023. So once they conclude the stakeholder feedback period, there'll be a voluntary launch in September if we want to jump in as early adopters for the launch. And that'll happen in September of 2023 with a projected mandatory implementation in September of 2024. A piece of that is, a piece of that is also our technology and our software. So if you go to the next slide, Sam, one of the things on here is the integration of special education management system. So currently, Power School is what we use for our student management system. For special education, we're still using Frontline, which is the old version of Eastbed. So we talked a little bit about this last year about bringing the two platforms together. I think that that's something we really want to consider and look at next year if we are going to be part of that voluntary launch in 2023. It'll be a nice time to implement the new forms and the new structure of that system with a new management system. So that's something we're going to explore in the coming months. I'll have more information about that, what it would look like, and the implications for cost and staff and all that.
It's prevented us from doing it in the past.
It's a great question. Yeah, I don't know. So we, Power School was in its, I think, first or second year when I started.
I mean, some of the last three or four years.
Yeah. Yep. But the component, the special education 504 health piece was not part of that package that we signed up for. So we, they still maintain the Eastbed version to manage that piece. So it's just something we have to look at. It would be a slow process. It would be a year-long transition anyways, where we would have both modules up. And anytime we had a meeting, we would put into the new system to make sure that we were kind of putting it in with fidelity and consistency. There are some districts that engage in an upload and all at once. That hasn't been successful, so I've reached out to probably five or six. Yeah. Did you experience, Carrie?
We abandoned our attempt for exactly those reasons.
Yes, so I've reached out to five or six districts that have switched to one system. And what has happened is the data update became very problematic. It wasn't as clean as people had wished. So for us, I think what we would do is we would do it over a one-year period where we would phase out one system and we would put documents into the new system on an ongoing basis as we held meetings, just to make sure there was accuracy and consistency across.
So are you getting a, are you getting a clear picture for what the financial obligations are going to be over the next three or five years, special ed for this district? Or is that still unknown?
It's a hard question.
Yeah.
So, so Jay and I meet regularly, and he loves our time together. And, and we try our best. There's a lot of variables.
You realize that.
Yeah. So it's a hard, it's, it's hard because it's not as solid as enrollment numbers, right? So when you get your enrollment projections, they're very consistent. You look at, you know, the housing market, you look at your growth factor, and you can see where your numbers are going to be for enrollment. Special ed is just not as clean as that. There's a lot of variables that are involved in it. I know this year, we've gotten some notifications, and Jay's done a great job kind of proactively reaching out to our out-of-district placements to talk about what their expected rate is. I know I talked about this last year, too, because we had one out-of-district placement that the state approved a 30% rate hike, and it to the tune of $60,000. So those are things that we don't have much control over. It becomes legislative. There's an opportunity for us to participate in those conversations before the rates are approved, but it's minimal.
Well, I think, I think from, from our standpoint, we understand, I'll speak for myself, I understand completely how, how variable it's going to be, depending on how many kids we need to support and all that.
Yeah.
But if we just assume the cost from this year, just to find out what percentage increases over the state period of five years, gives us an understanding of the magnitude of the impact.
Right.
So that would be appreciated.
Okay, yeah.
Like, you're mentioning in here, the, these are valuable programs and that are going to be mandatory for us in 2024. That's, that has a cost implication to it, right? So we want to make sure we're prepared for those things.
Perfect. And then the other piece that's going to play into that is the second bullet. So the first one is budget development for FY24. So that's part of what we're going to be doing now in the next couple of months is talking about what it looks like and where our needs are and where we potentially need to increase some staffing, which plays nicely into my expansion of programming. So that is the other piece that I'm looking at. And I will tell you that the highest needs is our therapeutic programming. So it's a conversation I've had before. I think it's, it's necessary. I think it's something that is valuable for us in a, in a variety of ways. It's, it's great for our students to get the support that they need in their communities. We do have the option for out-of-district. It, it's just not always my favorite option because I feel like it separates our students from their community, and that's really not something that we want to do. So I think that the expansion of programming is really going to play into that, too, Sean, as far as the cost piece is involved, because that is another big piece of, of where we are right now with the expansion. So for me, it's really focusing on that therapeutic program. The biggest needs I see are at the high school and the elementary school. Those are the two areas that we're focused on. We'll be developing programming, we'll be talking about staffing. We were fortunate last, two years ago, to add some additional counseling staff at the high school. So that's great, and I think that gives us a little bit of a leeway to play with for supporting some of this programming. At the elementary, we're really thin. We have one counselor in each building, so it looks a little bit different at the elementary level. So that's where we're going to have to get creative, and that's where we talk about district resources. So it's not just placed at one building, it's a district resource that we utilize across a couple of buildings to meet the needs of our students. So that'll be something you'll see coming out. It'll be more eloquently put together so that you have information about the programming and the staffing and the potential cost to that. But I do think, in my personal opinion, that is where you're going to see the biggest expansion of our budget.
I mean, you're doing a really good job outlining the need. If we see more detail on that and a real well-fought justification.
Yeah.
That would be really awesome.
Yeah, and I took a couple of numbers just to look, because it gets a little tricky giving numbers around social, emotional, behavioral health, because we want to be, you know, respectful of people. But I just, so one of the things that I also manage is hospitalization tutoring. So when students are out of the district for hospitalization, whether it's medical or behavioral health, after so many days, they're, they're allowed to access our tutoring system. So last year, we had about 12 to 15 students qualify for tutoring because they had met that mark of more than 10 days out, and some of those students were multiples. So that's always something that is a heightened concern of mine. Our return to services has been great, both at the middle and the high school, but I do worry when we're seeing students multiple times out of school. So that means that those return to services may not be enough. This year, from September to current, it, we're at seven students, and some of those have been multiples. So when I see that kind of a 12 student count, 12 to 15 over last year, and I'm already at seven, that's a significant increase. But you'll see additional data when we talk about it and when I propose, just so that you have a better understanding of the magnitude. Again, we do great with the resources that we have, but we can do better with some additional resources. So that's that piece. And then a couple of upcoming events. So we have our basic rights. The CPAC leadership talked about our basic rights presentation. That's going to happen on December 12th here at the, at the NITMUC. We have a parent presentation coming up about navigating the I E P process. So if we go back to the beginning where we had some growth opportunities in our survey, one of the things that families talked about was not kind of understanding their role. So this is a presentation that we developed focusing on what is your role before the meeting, during the meeting, after the meeting? And then we're going to highlight four or five pages of the I E P to talk really about what those are, some of the areas that families might not be as familiar with, and, and kind of go through and give examples of that. So that presentation will be coming up. And then our last one is our pre-K open house is going to be in February of 2023. The date hasn't been solidified yet, but once it is, we will get that information out.
So that's at both schools?
Both schools, yeah. Yeah. Questions?
Any questions?
Just a quick, all of the tutors that you mentioned, so when the students are out, so like, once they come in, like, we have staffing for return support services, correct? So the tutoring you mentioned, is that something that's done, provided by staff? Or is that, like, how does that impact the budget? Is it more just if we have that many more kids and that many more hours, then we need additional staff?
It's a little bit of both. So we, so if they're placed in a hospitalization, they contract with, with someone. So I will get a contract that says, you know, we'd like to provide tutoring services. This student has been with us for this many days. They send us the necessary paperwork, and then we approve it. And then they would do the tutoring. We provide all the materials, though. We have found in the past that sometimes when we lend to the tutoring agencies to do what they need, we have, you know, ninth graders prepping for SATs or, you know, it's just, it's not very, there's just no control. So what we do now is we provide the materials to, to the tutor. The tutors are then contracted, though, through wherever the program is. They have, they don't, they have their own contracted list. Separately, we also have a district tutor who works with our families. So some families and some programs don't allow tutors to come in, or they feel like the student's not in a place to receive that tutoring, or it has to be virtual, and that's not something that the family or the student wants to engage in. So we will hold off and wait and provide that tutoring when they are released and discharged. They still are accessing our return to student, uh, school services, but they're also potentially receiving tutoring to help make up that work. Yeah. And we do focus on essential assignments, because at the end of the day, we really want our students to focus on their own, you know, mental health and that to be the priority. And we don't want a stack of work like this showing up when they're trying to work through and meet with their counselors and do that really difficult work. So we do try to make sure that it's just essential assignments that we're sending in and that our staff who works with them when they return is really focused on that.
It'd be great to see, Jen, when you come back and talk about that, like, if there's some sort of visual you can put together for us that looks at the comparison cost of out-of-district placements for students versus the cost to the district to hire staff to meet some of those needs. I think that would be some powerful information.
I would love to. Great. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for hanging in there this past three, three years. This has been insane.
It's been lovely. We've gotten a lot of great things done.
No, I really mean that, though. Thank you so much for doing a great job. All right. So on to new business. Clough Memorial Elementary School Improvement Plan. Yeah, I know.
Okay, all right. Hi. I guess I get to, I got to draw the short straw and start. As the newest new person, I think maybe, but my name is Liz Garden. I'm the principal at Clough and very excited to be here with my colleagues to share our elementary school improvement plan. So we're, we're all going to each share a little bit of information, but if you can go to, I'll just talk about our first, well, first of all, I'll say that to me, it's very exciting to come into a district where I get to collaborate with Wendy, and that's been a new experience for me, not just having just Clough School Group Plan. I appreciate that we're able to work together and kind of interesting that Wendy and I are on very much the same wavelength, which is awesome. So our first main goal, you know, following along with the district strategic plan of, you know, understand, support, and engage. In terms of understand, we both recognize that we really want to make sure that we are truly understanding our students' needs. And we also recognize that we really didn't have something consistent in place as far as like data inquiry cycles for both schools to really bring teachers together, look at the data, set some goals, and then follow through with how we're implementing that data to either adjust our practice or to, you know, monitor students' progress. So our first goal really centers around that, about establishing a consistent cycle. And we've already kicked that off this year by first, you know, we've, at Clough, we've looked at like kind of bringing the whole staff together in small groups when we've come together as a whole staff. And then we've been bringing them together in small groups with their grade-level teams. And, you know, sometimes what you see is that that ends up in some of the pictures that we included here, like, that ends up being like we have some small group instruction that's happening. And we're mainly focused in this in, in the literacy area of literacy. You're going to hear a lot about that when we talk about our school improvement plan because it's just an area that we know we feel like we need to focus on more. And then, you know, and then you see it tripled down to how it's impacting the students. And I wanted to take this chance to introduce, she's not going to, I'm not going to make her speak, but this is Maria DeRusso, who is our district instructional coach, and she has already provided so much great help and support, especially with this goal, you know, and, thank you. Where, you know, we started off with just simply really talking to our teachers about what is the data that we're collecting, you know, what kinds of assessments are we giving our, our students? What does that mean? What does it, you know, when we look at it? What, then what can we do with that information? And, you know, just to show you the example of what we're doing, and we're doing similar work at each school, but we each kind of have our own process that we're going through. But, you know, for example, at Clough, we are getting our teachers on what we're calling like a five-week cycle where we're, you know, we bring the grade-level team together. We have something that we're looking at, some piece of data. They're looking at that information together as a group. Maria and I are helping to guide them through that, and we're kind of having them set some small goals of, you know, okay, what is this telling us? So now what are we going to set for a goal for the next five weeks within our classrooms? And then we're going to come back together as a team and say, you know, did we, do we adjust our practice in this way? Did we shift how we were doing our literacy instruction? You know, what impact did that have? And then, again, setting some new goals or looking at some new data and then continuing with that cycle throughout the year. And then I don't know, I'm sorry. There's also pictures for Memorial, too.
Yeah, we, we created two slides for each, each of the goals, just so you can see how it's manifesting in each of the buildings. In the upper left corner here, our teachers at Memorial are looking at the ELA standards as, as Liz says, said, we're really focused on literacy and aligning our curriculum and our instructional practices to the, the standards over the next couple of years. So that picture up in the left corner was from the last PD day in November where our teachers were looking at the standards vertically from grades pre-K through four. And we were working backwards, kind of noticing what changes from year to year with each standard, and then designing formative assessments that they could use to assess the standard. And then we actually looked at the assessments from K to four to see if we were growing year to year. And that's the beginning of the work that we're planning on doing and collecting data along the way. I'm going to go back to the data, the data cycles. The other two pictures are of a new structure that we've put in place this year. It's actually Matt Hagan's wife in the middle, middle picture there. We have implemented a win block, which is a what I need block, where we're using data that we're collecting in both ELA and math and grouping kids flexibly between classrooms for between 30 to 40 minutes a day to give them intervention and extension enrichment opportunities based on how they're performing against the grade-level standards. So we're taking a look at, for the beginning of the year, we used the I Ready data just as a starting point because it was the data that we had on our hands. And as we are going through the year, we're kind of trying to shift to more natural assessments that are happening in the classroom to see where kids are at and what we need to provide more intervention and possible enrichment to kids with, so.
Our second goal really ties closely with the first one. So under support, it's really focused on strengthening, strengthening our tier-one instructional practices to meet the needs of all of our various learners. This year, we're really going to work on expanding our knowledge of the universal design for learning and equitable and inclusive practices in order to support all our learners. By learning how to universally design our instruction and use small group instruction, we're really going to better meet those needs and also be able to see some higher engagement. And there'll be really less need to intervene with such large group of students. Like Liz and Wendy both said, we're really focused on literacy. So in each building, our grade-level teams are going to be unpacking the progression of ELA standards to design standard-based instruction and really implement instructional practices and strategies that promote access for all. This will allow us to look at our ELA curriculum wonders in a different way, better to really connect it in support to our standard-based instruction. Teachers in grades K through two are learning and implementing the new curriculum foundations to improve our early literacy skills. We're looking at our literacy block schedules and really redesigning those and trying out different models within that block to make sure that we're allowing more time for small group instruction, especially for our most struggling readers. And we're also really looking at those instructional moves that are really impactful for our learners. Teachers are also going to have the opportunity to observe literacy blocks outside of M U R S D. So we're going to have our first learning walks actually happen in December during our professional learning day, where they're going to be going and seeing literacy blocks in other districts. learning day, where they're going to be going and seeing literacy blocks in other districts. Along with all of this is the need to constantly assess our progress to see if the work we're doing is really supporting our students. So if you go back to that first slide, the way that's looking in Memorial right now is on that first picture on the upper left is second grade foundations group happening. It's actually being student-led at that moment. The middle is the excitement of reading, right? Right there is two girls in their enrichment win block, which is a book club. And the other two pictures are small group reading, guided reading instruction. So the one on the top right is our first grade Spanish immersion class. And the one at the bottom is a third grade small group instruction. And then, go ahead, Liz. Yeah. And so similar, you'll see many similar things happening at Clough. You know, there's, we have our reading specialist there pulling a small group on those cookie sheets using, going over foundations. And then, you know, I love when I just walked into a class the other day and, you know, saw that's a teacher sitting right next to her student reading together. You know, that's something that we are trying to work hard, especially in our upper elementary at Clough, to make sure that we have more and diverse texts for our students to be reading. So, you know, we've been doing some different things to add into the collection that they already had. And you'll see, you know, in that other picture there, the kiddos on the, on the ground, reading a really great book, The Proud of Blue. And then the writing and the conversation that came out of that group was just amazing to witness. And then same thing, like then you'll see even our youngest, our kindergartners there engaged in, you know, a whole group foundations lesson. So, and I wanted to go back and say too, that, you know, you'll see like similar things happening between both buildings. But, you know, whereas when Wendy talked about, for example, just having the staff start to look at the ELA standards, and I know, I think you guys did reading, and we chose to do, start with writing. So we did same kind of process, but we looked at the writing standards and talked about, looked at actual examples of writing at every grade level, not our own. So that was first eye opening to see kind of what are the expectations at each grade level. And then our next step is going to be to look at our own students' writing and really see, you know, where are they? And, you know, where do we need to take them forward? And also talking, we're talking a lot at Clough about just how we can incorporate writing throughout the whole day and actually how we can make sure that we are actually instructing writing, not just, not just assessing and not just assigning tasks, but actually instructing writing.
I think this is a good time to pause and thank the district really for providing so many resources to us over the past few years. I think having a reading specialist in both buildings has been really, really a wonderful resource for us. The addition of an instructional coach and our assistant principal, Warren Tuke, I think. It's just allowed us to have a nice team between the two buildings to really bounce ideas off of and be planful as we move forward. And in particular, in the area of literacy, we have a lot of really, really good experts in early literacy acquisition and, and how to, how to teach kids how to read and write. So the team is a big part of this plan as well. Our third goal is under the area of engage, and it's connecting those portrait of a learner competencies into our day-to-day activities and instruction in our schools. I start talking and then I don't write my notes. We do recognize that our students need to learn more than how to read, write, and do math, even though at the elementary level, that's kind of where we're rooted and grounded. And as you heard in our previous two goals, we're looking critically at our instructional practices and considering learning models that we're engaging our students in. And so one of our action steps is to really start making these portrait of a learner competencies visible in the day-to-day work that we're doing. So as we're taking a look at the standards and we're looking at our curricular resources and we're looking at our instruction, we're also going to be asking our educators to incorporate those competencies of collaboration, communication, critical thinking, problem solving into their learning goals and into their lesson plans. And our hope is that by the end of this year, we'll be able to start having our third and fourth graders start reflecting on how those skills are helping them to become better expert learners. We're going to conduct learning walks in our own building as well as in other schools. We're really looking forward to getting out of the district this year some and observing what other districts are doing really well and what we can take away from other places. And we'll be looking for practices that embed that portrait of a learner and support student engagement and learning. And we'll be providing feedback to our students on how they're doing with that. So these pictures kind of shows just some of the ways that we're doing this already. This first grader, I think this is a first grade class, is sharing during a morning meeting time. That's something that we've added in to our daily schedule at Memorial this year is every, every classroom, starting with a morning meeting. So being able to present to your class about something that's important to you. That middle group is during a phys ed class plotting for how they're going to approach and strategize for an activity. And then some artists in Mrs. Fowler's art class are looking creatively at how to put some artwork together on their paper.
And, you know, I would just add to, Wendy said that beautifully, but, you know, I think like when it comes down to it, when we met and talked about, you know, what portrait of a learner means and looks like at the elementary level, it's really about like, you know, we have, I know at Clough, we have a beautiful poster on the wall, right? It's like taking it off that poster and making it come to action, you know, in the classrooms every day and for the students to recognize and understand that. And so, you know, there's just a couple of things here. We just did a really awesome cardboard creation day at Clough where the kids had a lot of cardboard saved from since the summer and just got to create and make whatever they wanted. So, you know, they were really doing a lot of problem solving. We didn't group them. They could make their own groups, you know, mix within each class, things like that. So here you have some first graders who were, they were making a gym. They were designing a gym and had all kinds of plans. In forty minutes' time, they did a lot, actually. But, and then, you know, back towards the beginning of the year, that's a picture of some fourth graders. We celebrated on dot day, the idea of making your mark and like, you know, how can you become like your own individual person and really be creative and be you. You know, this little guy's kindergartner, he's holding up a little sign. I don't know if you can read it. It says like you are, you are, I think it says you are a great friend. We did a positive post-it note day recently where all the students arrived and had positive post-it notes on their lockers. And then they were encouraged and have been since writing their own notes for their peers and, and the school. So just kind of that whole like being a little citizen and, and, you know, accepting of everyone and, and sharing. And then we just, I love the, the chess master and student. This was in a second grade classroom. We did a play day the other day where students were able to, to just have unstructured playtime. And we saw a lot of awesome things happening. And this was one of them where students were teaching each other games and strategy. And teachers were teaching kids and students were teaching teachers. And just, you know, really, we saw portrait of a learner coming to life in all the classrooms. So.
We also did design two school-specific goals, one for Memorial and one for Clough that kind of came from, the one for Memorial came out of a survey that our school council put together for our families last spring, where we asked all different questions about different aspects of the school day, operations, how well-informed parents are feeling about different, different things. And we had over a hundred families respond to the survey, which was really good. And most of our, most of our responses, families agreed or strongly agreed on. But there was one area that was a little lower where we only had about 60% of our, our families agreeing or strongly agreeing. And that was in the area of feeling informed about how their students are progressing in the classroom and understanding what the curriculum was and what we were doing to instruct their children. So we designed a goal, the school council did last spring, to put in this year's school improvement plan to be more deliberate about sharing curriculum and instructional highlights weekly throughout the year, through my newsletter, through beginning of the year, new parent orientation in, in our teachers newsletters that we're making more consistent. Teachers have the option to either do a weekly newsletter for their families. A lot of them like to do a peek of the week, or through a monthly newsletter that families know when to expect its coming home. We've also implemented a weekly communication folder that goes home every Monday so that any notices, parents know that that's the day that they should be looking for information. And teacher, and I guess the other piece that I can add in is our, our specialists are doing a monthly newsletter. This was just a piece from the first one that they did, but that each month they're sending home something as a, as a specialist team so that families can keep updated on what they're doing in their specials as well. And our hope is that by the end of the year, our families will respond closer to 80% on the survey that they're feeling in the know with what's happening in the school so that they're better able to support their children from the information that's flowing.
So coming in new to Clough, I discover things every day. And one of the things I discovered is that we weren't, we didn't give a parent survey last year or a staff survey. So I don't have that information to pull from. So that is our goal, is to make sure that we do give out a parent survey at the end of the year and the staff survey. I mean, that's just something that as a principal I've always done. So I'm happy to be able to, to do that this year. And I'll be working with the, the school council to develop that survey, both those surveys, and distribute it. But, you know, we have already, you know, been making sure to keep parents in the loop, update them, to gather feedback. You know, this is just some examples of even from starting at the beginning of the year when we did open house. As a staff, we really talked about, you know, what was our past practice? Like, should we make any changes or adjustments? And, you know, then we also, this was, we have, we had the community coming in, the Mendon seniors came in and delivered supplies to us. So just kind of like also making sure that the community feedback is included in there as well. There's another picture from cardboard day. We had parent volunteers come in. So getting feedback from parents about some of these different activities that now they're able to kind of come be part of again. So I'm looking forward to gathering the feedback and then being able to use that going forward.
So with that, we will take any questions.
I can't wait to see the self-reflection.
That was one of my last week. Liz asked the teachers to do flip grids with their students, which is like a little short video reflecting on cardboard day and play day. And some, some of the teachers were having some glitches with technology. So I was able to go work with some kindergartners. And that was like the highlight of my week because just listening to them reflect about what they did and who they played with and what they would do next time to make it better was amazing.
Yeah. So we've already started trying to kind of just, you know, have them practice, like giving feedback and, you know, and they definitely, they want, they want to share their thoughts always. So, so we're trying to think of different ways to capture that.
To see how that, how that's affecting us. That's very good. So, yeah, to be able to set that context for the rest of the, for the rest of the district parents.
Great.
I'll ask one question. Sure. Thank you for this. This was really, really good. Liz, you may be already hit what I'm, what I'm going to ask. So I guess between yourself and Lauren both being new to the district this year, and this is the improvement plan. Do you guys think of like one example each of something that come into the district said, wow, like we just nailed it here. Like this is better than I've seen at other districts. And I know Lauren, you were prior to the college business for a while, in schools business for the schools. And what's an example of something saying, you know what, you know, we can do better. And I've seen better at the previous schools I had or the previous districts.
Okay, that's not a loaded question, but. I can start. So, you know.
You could say we didn't do service. That's something we can do better.
There you go. No, I mean, I, I have, I have, I have been in several different districts. And I will say that I feel like one thing that coming into this district that I was searching for and found was, you know, a district that, what? Go ahead. Okay. We really are a team. We collaborate as good. Is that, that, that there's like a strategic plan and a vision and people are all working toward in the same and rowing with, you know, the same direction. Because that, you don't find that everywhere, you know? And so I would say that's something that coming in, it's like, oh, yes, like, thank goodness, like that the, the leadership team, you know, clearly communicates. I mean, now that I've been part of it, I know that, and you know, but like on the, from an outsider, I had heard that's what happens. But, you know, clearly communicates and it's, you know, common like language discussion. People are comfortable talking about it and, you know, and recognizing it. And then it, like it made, I feel like we were forming the school improvement plan. And it made our job that much easier to say, okay, like we, we know exactly what we need to work on. And this fits right along with what the district is doing. So I would say that is something that, you know, absolutely is being done well.
I can piggyback off that for the doing well.
Oh, so I'll let you talk.
Yes. I was, I was going to say just the communication between leadership in, in all buildings, in the leadership team, being able to meet frequently, being able to be at the table together multiple times a month is, is something that I have not experienced in other districts that I've worked.
Yeah. And I'll go, okay, I'll go again. I'll piggyback again. I mean, like, you know, I've been in a lot of districts. I've worked with a lot of central office staff, different, very different. I mean, the fact that Maureen and Cheryl and Jay, I will, I'll add you, and Jen are like always available and, you know, sometimes always present. I mean, I turn around and they're, oh, they're in our building, I guess. That doesn't happen in a lot of places. And, you know, some people would say like they maybe don't want that. I was searching for that because, you know, it's an isolating job to be a, a building administrator. And the fact that, you know, like I can turn around and call any of them. I mean, I'm pretty sure I did that with two of them today, you know, and they'll be on the other end to answer, or they'll get back to me, or that they're seeing what we're doing. That is not, you don't find that in, in a lot of districts. So I think, you know, like for like, okay, so now go to the other, like what do we need to get better at? I mean, there's always room to, to grow. I think that, you know, just I, probably from being a smaller district, you know, there are just still like, just different systems that aren't fully in place, right? That they're, they're getting put in place, but maybe they, you know, but I think that there's a lot of work being done to do that. So, I mean, those are just areas to, you know, that certainly, you know, we, we need growth in. But a lot of them are already being addressed or have been addressed. So, you know, and I think that definitely comes from being in just a smaller district, having been in some larger districts where, you know, you kind of have to have some very specific systematic, systematic protocols in place. Yeah. That's okay. Hope I answered that question.
And I would say, just based on our school improvement plan, I think, you know, really looking at our literacy instruction as a from, all the way from pre-K through high school, right? So really having that connection from pre-K through eighth grade, making sure there's a connection between middle school, elementary school, and middle school, and then that connection from middle school to high school. I think that the way we're all looking at our school improvement plan, the way we're all talking about literacy instruction and really trying to focus in on that, I think that's where we need to improve, which is why our school improvement plan is.
Thank you, Bob. I know they're very insightful and compassionate. I appreciate it.
It's very strange that I'm the senior member of this team right now.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move on to the staff committee updates. What, subcommittee?
Meeting on November 15 and December 13?
Well, November 15, it's already passed. So we're not meeting then.
Just read the minutes.
No, I think we're meeting the 29th.
That's just my, I own that type of.
And then in terms of school goals, I think we still are in the process of And then in terms of school goals, I think we still are in the process of collaborating and getting those and consolidating them together, so we'll review them now, so. Questions, thoughts? All right, any other matters not anticipated by the committee within 48 hours of the posted meeting? No? Correspondences? None? Future agenda items? We have plenty of agenda coming up here. We have many things, many things. We have. Yeah, that's right. There we go. Well, we don't really have anything coming up. There we go, no. Any other thoughts? So then I just need a motion to adjourn.
Do adjourn?
All those in favor? All right, carries, we adjourn at 8:32.